We're going to go straight into Dr. Waltz's opening remarks and adjustments to the budget. Thank you.
Good evening Chairman Latif, Vice Chairman Wilk, members of the school board, and all in attendance this evening. We've been working on the FY '20 budget. We started back in July, and I introduced my proposed FY '20 budget in early February based on school board, staff, and community input, added included funding for my six top priorities as well as other key initiatives. First was a step in a cola for teacher and employee compensation, and we were able to do that without an increase in healthcare. Two, fully funding the special education improvements recommended by our school board study. Three, mental health and wellness staffing. Four, Phase One of the career and technical education plan. Five, maintaining our class size reduction initiative. Six, maintaining and expanding our pre-K classes even with the loss of federal funding. Seven, in addition, there are some other things I'm going to highlight besides those six priorities. Ongoing school security improvements, opening the new John D. Jenkins Elementary School and adjusting for new additional students division-wide. Nine, school instructional technology improvements. Ten, support for athletics including additional gyms at Woodbridge and Garfield. And eleven, opening the Western Transportation Center to improve bus efficiency, routing, and maintenance of our fleet. With input from the previous budget work sessions and ongoing input from staff and the community, I have adjusted the proposed budget to now also include funding for the following. On budgets person office startup expense. Two, ten additional seats for the governor's school at Innovation Park, which means more opportunities for more students. Three, file for support for our before and after-school program. Four, the new elementary math textbook adoption. Five, elementary PE teacher pilot at six schools. Six, study and pilot, this is again something new, study and pilot close for expansion, bowling, for example, is a new possibility, and assistance with offsetting costs for current families, for example, crew. Seven, implementation of the two-court option in the CIP for the auxiliary gyms at Garfield and Woodbridge High Schools. Eight, renovation of front offices, complete renovations of all the front offices for Osborn Park and Stonewall Jackson High Schools. Nine, security to support a pilot for, we're going to do one school, a pilot for individual community use of a high school track. Now, there's a lot of, you know, there's groups that have formulated on this, and one thing that they're mentioning is that Fairfax has this at all their high schools. Fairfax tracks are separated from their high school football fields and stadiums. That is a big difference, and we've had some security issues. I'll just give you one example. Over at Lake Ridge Middle, we had somebody go in with a four-by-four vehicle and tear up the entire field that went offline for a year. So this is not some road to go down lightly. That being said, all of our middle schools are available, the tracks are open, and we are going to pilot one high school with additional security to make sure that everything is taken care of. Ten, four additional turf fields to complete our high school upgrades with Brentsville and Hilton in the FY '21 CIP, and Garfield and Osborn Park in the FY '22 CIP. Additionally, I have removed the Kelly Leadership Center from the 2019-20 CIP and moved the Akaquan Elementary replacement up another year in the CIP, advancing it a total of three years from the last adopted CIP. And with all this good news, I'll now turn it over to Mr. Wallingford for a brief presentation to further explain my recommended changes to the proposed budget along with our resolution to the previously announced reduction in state aid. Mr. Wallingford.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz, Dr. Latif, members of the board. Brief presentation, some of these numbers you've seen. State revenue, if you recall from the presentation last week, is down about $3.5 million. So what's going to happen to cover what Dr. Waltz just mentioned is an adjustment in the timing of debt sale. That's the second number you see there, okay? We're actually going to slide out a couple of months to October, our next debt sale. Part of the reason we're doing that is because we've had, excuse me, had some difficulty buying land, and we've had some weather issues, which have actually slowed us down a little bit and have allowed us the flexibility to move that debt sale out. And what happens is the payments fall off the fiscal year into the next year, or substantially fall off into the next year. So you see a reduction of about four and a half, excuse me, about five and a half million dollars as a result of that change. The last item you see here is $773,000 in additional Title II funding. That's just additional information we've received since the budget was originally proposed. So pending expenditure adjustments, Dr. Waltz actually just went through this list. You can see the items here. I'm not going to go through all of them again.
While we have that slide up, there's nothing I love more than being corrected five minutes, well, five seconds after I've said something, but I have been corrected that not all the tracks are separated in Fairfax. So I don't pretend to know all of the detail about how they operate their high school tracks, but we're going to start with one, and we'll research what they do up there and how they do it as part of this pilot.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz. So here are some CIP changes or additions. Dr. Waltz, I think, has mentioned all of these as well. The two-court option you see there at the top, additional turf fields, and you can see on your handouts where these fall on those schedules. Moving Akaquan up a couple of years, three years to be precise. The Kelly Leadership Center is removed from 2019-2020 CIP. And the final item you see there is the renovation that was mentioned of the front office space at Osborn Park and Stonewall Jackson High School. So last item here, remaining budget timeline tonight, the 13th, we'll go through markup. March 20th next week, we hope to adopt a budget. And then April 2nd, presentation to the County Board of Supervisors with the final adoption by the County Board of Supervisors on April 30th. Thank you very much.
Okay, any questions about what they presented just now?
I'm sorry, I wanted to bring it back, and I just wanted to...
Microphone, Ms. Jesse.
I wanted to just, Dr. Waltz, if you would just explain the physical education plan and that pilot, and then what happens the following year? What are you looking at with that?
In the second year that I was superintendent, that was the last, what I would call, good budget before the Great Recession hit, we were looking at physical education and the need for exercise, and we doubled, you were a principal at the time, we doubled the amount of physical education at the elementary level. And so, for example, I think, was the ratio one to 400 or one to 450?
It's roughly one to 450, for every 450 students you...
Yeah. For every 450 students, you received a PE teacher. So, for example, we've got one school that has two PE teachers that's over 900 students. And so some schools opted to save some money, because this is in the per pupil allocation, and they hired a second person being a teaching assistant as opposed to a second teacher. And for some, you know, they really didn't have the funding for a second PE teacher, and those were difficult budget years. So what we're going to do in this first year, simultaneously, while we're having a study group which will include PE teachers, we're going to look at the enrollments of the highest number of students at the elementary level, and we are going to get, we're going to have six additional PE teachers. Now, it's not that they would just get the total amount of funding for that, because if they have a teaching assistant, again, we'll have to work out those details. One of the things that's very important to me, and I know this just from my own personal experience as a dad, there are some schools that have a PE teacher and a teaching assistant that have worked together for a very long time, that very much like the working relationship. And so we will go through the six highest enrolled elementaries and make them the first six that we look at. However, we need to have the physical education teacher, the teaching assistant, and the principal on the same page. So if we have a principal that says, hey, look, Steve, this is working well, my PE teacher wants it to stay like it is, my teaching assistant wants it to stay like it is, and I want it to stay like it is, then we will look at the next school with the highest enrollment. So it could be the first six all say, no, we want to go ahead. The other thing is we need to, whatever we do with this, we need to phase in any adjustment to the teaching assistants, because I want to make 100% sure that we find a job for those folks. And so I believe we can do Phase One of this simultaneously while we're studying it over the course of the next year, and then relook at this again in the next budget cycle for a possible expansion.
I just want to thank you for your consideration. This came out very last, at the very last minute, and the fact that you guys could at least come up with some plan to begin that process, you know, physical education is a very important program, as is all the other programs. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wilk?
I want to echo Ms. Jesse's compliments, I think, in the sense of like the responsiveness, and I know a couple other board members. The community usage of the field has been a big kind of emphasis or project of mine, and I thank you for jumping ahead of even my questions or anything tonight. So I think that's going to be a good phase-in approach, and hopefully we'll get some good information and see kind of the usage in the community and see if that's something we'll expand, but I'm very appreciative of that being added. Thank you.
I think if you want to ask questions about what he brought up, yeah. Sure. Anybody like to comment?
I just would like to thank Dr. Waltz. I think you truly did mean it when you said at our last work session that you've been listening to the community and all the board members, and I think that this budget and everything that you've done really demonstrates that, and I am extremely appreciative of that. And then also for putting on my chair for the Governor's Board. I know that the Governor's School is going to be very excited by the 10 additional seats, so I thank you very much for that.
Okay. So at this point, if there's no further questions, traditionally, we will do a initial straw poll to see where the board members are on this budget. So at this point, I'd like a show of hands of everyone favor the budget as the superintendent proposed tonight with its amendments and changes. It's non-binding vote, this doesn't, you know, you can still vote the way you wish next week when we officially vote on it at the school board meeting. So I'm in favor of the budget. All right, so we can go around, and if any board members have any questions or concerns, we can address those now. Gil, you want to go first, or? Okay. Diane, anything?
Was that 5-0?
Yes.
5-0. Ms. Jesse?
I'm happy.
Okay. Mr. Deutsch?
What? I'm third against that.
Outstanding. Ms. Satterwhite?
Same, she'll give a better...
Mr. Trenum?
Sure, thanks, I'll go. Could you go back on the slide, a couple minutes? And the, I think that slide. So I guess the question I had on this slide is, at the last work session, superintendent came in and said, please don't do, do me what you did last year, which was add like $3 million of the stuff at markup, and then dump it on him to try and figure out how to pay for it, which is always fun. But the question I had is, since we had a budget before that, where did this money come from to fund all this stuff?
So I'll let Mr. Wallingford address it, but if you could go back to the slide where you talked about the movement of the debt adjustment.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Trenum. So the total change to our budget is only $773,000, but like I said, what's happened is we've actually changed the timing on the sale of our next debt issuance, okay? The mortgage to pay for our new buildings. And so what happens is we slide that timing, and we move it, we're going to move it into September or maybe into October right now. And so what happens is those payments actually fall off of fiscal year '20, a substantial portion of them. And so the requirement in the debt service fund falls by about $5.5 million, which frees up that money for the operating or general fund. So we've actually freed up about $5.5 million as a result of that timing change.
So we're just basically, we're just pushing that, pushing those costs to the right?
That's correct.
So this also...
Dr. Waltz?
This also is an answer to a previous, either work session or school board meeting, one or board members entered into the conversation about if we were doing something different with building and debt, would we be able to free up more money to do other things? I mean, it's all for the kids, but other things that are important for our school division. So this is the response to that.
Okay. Let's see, that's all the questions I think I had right now. Actually, no, you reminded me, I do have another one. So in the salary study, you talked about how, I think at the last meeting, Mr. Wallingford, how many positions did you say were affected by that? I think it's by the changes in either steps or grades or what have you?
Sure. The number that I provided to the board at the last work session was in the range of 450 to 470. The number's actually, with everybody in, about 570 employees who were impacted by that reclassifications in that salary study. So it's off by a bit.
Okay. As far as those reclassifications, were those primary, primarily in the, I guess, maybe, break it, how many of those roughly, ballpark, how many of those were basically classified positions and salary versus salary positions?
Actually, I don't have that break here with me. We can certainly get that information for you. The number of titles or positions, not people, that were impacted was in the range of 70. So it was a pretty extensive effort.
Okay. Yeah, if we could get that, I'd appreciate that. The last thing, maybe this is just a, from a philosophical perspective, because I came on with you, Dr. Waltz, when the budgets were ugly, I remember Ms. Beecham slamming the notebook shot and saying, this budget sucks. And it's been that way ever since. So this is, this is a very different experience, but I have to admit, in one aspect, it's almost more frustrating for me than a regular year, because I see so many opportunities that we can do in these kinds of years. And two that I'll talk about specifically. One, we talked about before with our pay scale, we've got 32 steps now in our pay scale. I think we got, I think the number of steps that we have is ridiculous. At one point, we had a committee on, a committee on looking at the pay scale and seeing if we can do something, I think we had like 80-some-odd people on it or something like that. And nothing came of that, and I remember a comment at one point that the only time, the only times you can really do things with the pay scales like that is when there's a lot of money in the system. And I think now would have been one of those opportunities. Just when I look at that, when I look at our pay scales, the step scales that we have, it's like a linear growth, people go up, I was going to say go up the step range, it's just linear from the beginning of your career to the end of your career. And that, to me, that's not how, that's not how most of the world operates. Most of the world operates that after you get a couple of years of experience, you ramp up quickly and then maybe curve down. And so that you, the people that we are trying to retain, we're having difficulty retaining, are the ones that are, we're losing them in those early years, and I think that's because of the way the step scale is structured. So I think that would have been, this would, maybe would have been a good opportunity to do something like that, which goes to my question about the $100 per base in Mr. Wallingford. The only other thing I find, I found a little bit frustrating about this is the opportunity, I think, I think we had a good opportunity to make a good push on a reduction of class sizes. I know the one, the one question here talked about $17 million if we were to reduce every class size by one student, which would be nice, we have space issues, as superintendent pointed out, which is a very valid concern, but I would have liked to have seen us maybe just do something by reducing the caps, which is a little bit different than reducing average cap, class sizes. So I would have liked to have seen us be able to do something more aggressive on the class size, if you spare, but that's my opening statement, philosophical point at this point.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you. I guess going along with that lines, I think a couple of years ago, and again, I'm happy, obviously, with the budget where it's at, but something to think about again in the future that we talked about, and I think Mr. Klein, was it like right, what, three years ago, about backpaying steps and stuff like that? It was the study and the report and the millions of dollars, again, that would cost to backpay a step, you know, something, again, we can consider in the future, in a good budget year, kind of what Mr. Trenum was saying with the scale and the steps, big projects, you know, opportunities in the future. I'm very happy, again, this is the highest raise in over a decade for our teachers, something I feel like many of us wanted to do a long time, but that was something kind of just long-term thinking about the backpaying of steps, of the frozen ones that happened years ago. I also, and one thing, and I already got your answers, I appreciate, I know, I think last year, Ms. Satterwhite brought this up about the military liaison officer for our schools, which we have, correct? It's funded .5 by the school, .5 by the VOD grant or something like that?
I don't have the specifics, I just know we have a full-time person on that.
Okay. And that grant, I think, goes up in 2020 or something like that, or at least?
I don't know off the top of my head.
What? May of 2020. Okay. So that would be then something to, again...
It is 2020.
Yes, May 31st, 2020.
Okay. May of 2020.
Okay. So something, again, probably next year's budget, but thank you for answering those questions and just to keep it on the radar.
Dr. Waltz?
Just a couple of thoughts around some of the, some of the comments that have been One of the assignments that I had to do when I was getting my doctorate degree was study salary scales and how that worked in business, industry, the military, and education, and why are they different and what are some of the reasoning behind it? So just a few things that I have learned along the way that, you know, you may know these things, and if you do, I'm sorry to be going through them, but I think they're worth noting. One is the Virginia Retirement System Retirement Program for anyone who's been in it any length of time is based upon your final three years after you reach a certain number of years. So economically speaking, the amount of money that we would be increased in our share of the VRS payment if we accelerated the pay, which, quite frankly, I did that in my last school system. We condensed the pay scale, but it was a little different time and not near as big a system. The, a couple of things that you don't hear very often, you hear about the average salary in Prince William. Our average salary is driven mostly by the fact that we have a larger proportion of younger or more inexperienced teachers. So, you know, while some people love to use that as the benchmark, in reality, we have the highest teacher salaries in Northern Virginia at the top of the scale. So we actually have an incentive for people to stay. It's our own longevity built into the salary scale. A couple of other things that I would say is, yes, we have, we have added to the steps, but on multiple years, we have eliminated Step One. So even though we've added a step at the top, and again, if you're part of that employee group that's topped out, that means something if you get, you know, what we've given in the past, which is like an average of a two to 2.7% raise, and your retirement is based on your average final three years' highest salary. So all of those components, you know, kind of work together to drive that thing. And I will also just remind the board that in order to give the entry-level bus drivers a stronger increase, last year, we eliminated their first step, and we eliminated the first step of the teacher scale this year again. So again, it doesn't change the fact that we can look at these things, I'm happy to do so. I worked in other districts that had a different approach to this, and, but I just wanted to make the point that we have done some substantial things to help with our beginning salaries, and our salaries at the top are excellent in terms of competitiveness. Final thing I would say is our retention rate is substantially lower than Virginia's retention rate and the United States' retention rate.
Higher.
Higher. Say that again, say that again, Dr. Waltz.
Our retention rate is higher than the national average, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Which means more of our teachers stay than the average school system...
Correct.
...is able to retain.
That is correct.
Okay. Just, Mr. Wilk?
Just a point of technicality from maybe Mr. Wallingford. So although the .5 of that military position expires in May, I'm assuming we will have the funding to have them go throughout the rest of the duration of next year with the current budget, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just a check. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Again, yeah, again, I am, this is definitely a unique budget season since I've been sitting here on the board. It's nice to be in a position where we're not discussing cutting funds for testing or SATs or things of that nature, and I meant when I said earlier, I really do think that you have done a good job listening to each and every board member as well as the community and your staff at every level in making this budget happen. I think there's always, there's always room for improvement, and I, that's just how life goes, but I think as far as us having a year to make up for the past years, we're on the right track. I'm grateful that some of the information we've learned from the salary study and the special education study and other studies have slowly becoming incorporated into our budgets, because that's what we paid for to do. I'm just really excited by this year's budget, and I wanted to say thank you again.
Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Deutsch?
Anyway, I guess this is a different year than we expected, because we finished last year, and we were told very, very strongly that this next year's budget would be tight, we wouldn't be able to do a whole lot, and I guess it kind of turned into a Christmas tree of sorts. So I guess that means we'll start working on next year's budget nice and early this So one, I'm just, I'm just curious, there always seems to be something every year where we find all the money we need to do, we got to do. But this, can we talk through this whole deal we're doing with pushing the debt back? And how... And how, how is that gonna impact future years? And if we're pushing it off by a couple of months, how many months can you push it off and come up with more money?
So.
And it seems like we should, we're still gonna have to pay for it next year if we're not paying for it this year, right?
Mr. Wallingford, as you answer that, just, you know, be clear on what you mean by what you're pushing off, meaning the debt sale or debt payment. Let's make that clear for everyone.
Good point, Dr. Latif, thank you. So for the 25 years I've been here, every single of those 25 years, we've gone to the markets and sold debt, typically in May-June timeframe, okay? The payments, we go out and sell debt, it's effectively borrowing money, it's a mortgage, we have to pay it back, there's interest costs and there's principal that you pay back. So what happens, we do, actually do two interest payments, and, and this is detail, but there's two interest payments and a single principal payment annually for the debt service. So what happens is, when we slide the sale, we actually slide the first payment and then the second and third payments out as well. And so depending on when you typically sell and when you go to sale, we've changed the timing on this, those two payments that are made, the first payment's an interest payment, the second payment is both an interest and principal payment, what happens is that principal and interest payment slides out of fiscal '20 and into fiscal '21. And so what we've effectively done is, we've taken a breath and not made partial payments on that debt, because we're actually gonna go to the markets in October. So effectively, we just slide one or two payments off into the fiscal year, and the whole schedule slides out several months. And because of the timing of when the fiscal year ends, we don't have to make those payments in '20.
Correct, I appreciate that. And then the, the rest of the Triller Elimination Plan, that I think is about 150, 170 million dollars?
It was about 174 million.
Okay. Is that in the current CIP, right, that, that y'all are proposing that we're gonna be voting on, or is there gonna have to be some kind of vote to add that in?
It's currently split. If you take a look at the CIP, what you would see is a separate section for that 174 million dollar sale, and that's still a question, that's, that's what Mr. Klein raised at the last work session.
So that, that's not in the current budget?
It is not, it's part of the current CIP, that's still a, a topic of conversation to resolve. Whether we would fund the full 174 million dollars ourselves, or whether we would expect some county support in that, or, or for them to pick up the whole 174.
So. Dr. Walz.
So we discussed this at the last session.
My apologies.
And it's all right. And essentially, we're, my understanding from the board was that they expected that that committee would continue to meet and work to figure this out, but that we were not going to assume the entire amount in our CIP, because we're already going down a road with that committee. And so I think there are, what, three, four, five properties that, or schools that we?
There were two elementary schools and one middle school.
Okay, three schools, I was right with the first number.
Ms. Jessie.
I just, I, I wanted to respond to the board supervisors, our combined committee. We had our, at our last meeting, we, we are going to continue to meet.
Ms. Williams.
And just to piggyback on that, that was also something coming out of the committee, that's why both boards signed that resolution to work cooperatively together. So there's still work to be done, which is why we're not ready to add it, as, as far as the committee is concerned, to say one board or the other is solely responsible, we're still in discussions for that. So I think it's a little premature for the school board to undertake that without continuing the discussion in the committee, which is why we have it.
Mr. Wallingford.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. One other point to make is that the initial debt that we would sell for that 174 million dollars does not take place and impact fiscal '20.
Great, Ms. Satterway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much to everybody who helped to answer all the questions, because I know we were still getting them in early this week, and I really appreciate the help with that. I have a question based on one of my questions. Group six, number 10, at which schools will the middle school track improvements be made? And the response was, all the tracks are in good shape, but in the FY '19 NVE recommendations in our original budget PDF, it mentions track improvements, middle school, at $565,382. So is that still in the FY '19 money or not? Or is that something else happening to improve the field? Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Winley, for the math of the middle school I asked you about.
Did you understand that?
Yes, I did, thank you.
It was kind of convoluted, that's why I kind of.
You helped explain some of the things I've been looking at online, too, so thank you.
Okay, so, good evening. The funding that we asked for in the critical needs list also includes tennis courts as well. We've got a lot of, they're, they're asphalt just as, as well as tracks are. A lot of those are falling apart, and we are, so when you mentioned tracks initially, I didn't think about the tennis courts at the middle schools. So we are doing some, there is one middle school next year that we probably will take care of, and I believe it was Gainesville Middle, if I'm not mistaken, I need to confirm that with Mr. Clayborne, Supervisor of Facilities Management, but the tennis courts, there are some tennis courts at middle schools, and we do it. But when the, the turf fields were installed by the Parks and Rec.
Right.
A lot of the tracks at the middle school level were completely redone, so we didn't really have, we realized a benefit there in, in that work, so.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, since we had to do that back at the time, whenever those fields get redone in, at the tenure cycle by Parks and Rec, are they gonna have to fix the track that they messed up at the same time?
Probably not, because the, the work that, to replace the carpet, we call it the carpet, if everybody understands, it's, it's literally a piece of carpet. They wouldn't have to necessarily take really large, heavy equipment to replace the track, I think they can protect it well enough, and those tracks aren't rubberized, the middle schools aren't rubberized. So we would probably worry less about it.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Oh, and Dr. Walz, I want to thank you for adding in the pilot for the PE program. I appreciate that we are showing that we are listening and moving forward, and like everybody said, too, you added a lot of our concerns and recommendations over this budget, and it's nice to see that we are focusing on what the concerns are in our district and focusing on our students, so thank you.
Okay, thank you guys very much. So at this point, we can move to the section of the meeting where if there's anyone who wants to offer any changes to the budget, you certainly can do that now, we can discuss that and vote on that. As of this evening, I didn't, I wasn't notified by any board member of anyone asking for any change to the budget or any concern, so, but at this work session, that is one of the things we'll ask, and I'll go around the room, is, does anyone have anything they'd like to offer to the budget?
Oh, Mr. Trenum.
Okay, I would make a motion that we reduce the school board raises from 26,000 and 29, whatever they are, to something that's a little more modest, I would suggest 15,000 at the board, at the board member and 17,000 for a chair. That's not, that's not a bad existing, the 26,000, whatever, is like 117% increase, I think that's a big step all in one, a big chunk all in one step, so.
Anybody second?
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, we can take, oh, yeah, sure, Mr. Trenum.
One point of clarification, if I, I'm actually, Ms. McGowan can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the superintendent's, I mean, not superintendent, we can limit his to, the chairman's salary is limited by state law to $2,000 above what the regular board members are. So that, so that, is it, I thought it was like 29 something, so, okay.
Okay, so we need to have five votes to make that change, so anybody in favor of Mr. Trenum's proposal? Please raise your hand. Okay, that's four. Okay, so if that doesn't change, it'll stay the way it is in the budget. Next.
Point of order, I think there's kind of a question.
What is that?
Is there, is there opposition?
Sure, is there any opposition? So, I mean, if, so, so the four who are not voting with Mr. Trenum, please raise your hands. Okay, so it's four to four, need five votes for that to pass, thank you. Next. You need a majority, correct, five, that would have been five this evening, Mr. Trenum. Yeah, well, yeah, got it. Okay, any other additions, subtractions, concerns? Okay, as seeing none, Mr. Trenum.
Just one more, and this is just, you know, but with, along the lines of the class size reduction thing that we were talking about, I would put forward that we reduce the number of central office staffing positions that we're adding into this budget by, I'll say, 25% and transition that funding into class size reduction. That 25% would be at the superintendent's discretion, so, but.
Do you have, I have a second for Mr. Trenum's motion to reduce the, okay, I have a second by Mr. Deutsch, any discussion? No, just call the vote. Ms. Jessie? Then, then Ms. Williams.
I, I think to just pull a number out of the air and say reduce central office staff without looking at positions, their impact on instruction, their impact on physical plant issues, I, I'm not sure that's fair to central office. When we, the first budget meeting or the first session, there was an opportunity when each central office gave us their budget and the major binder and justification for their increases or decreases. I think it would have been more professional for us at that time to let them know their, why we wanted to reduce and our rationale, so I'm opposed to it.
Ms. Williams.
I'm gonna have to refer back to that pay study that I asked for, that said that we don't have enough staff as it is to complete the jobs and the work needed for a school system and a school division this large, so I'm definitely not gonna support that, especially since we spent money on a pay study to say that very thing.
All in favor of Mr. Trenum's recommendation to reduce central office staff 25%? The new positions 25%? Anybody, all in favor? Raise your hand. Okay, all opposed? Opposition or no's win, so next, Mr. Trenum, I think you, or not Trenum, Mr. Deutsch, you had your hand up for something?
All right. We have, sorry, wrong piece of paper. Under Rita Goss, we have a substance abuse prevention specialist. Mallory McKnight, she's doing a lot of awesome stuff, and I wanted to make an amendment to offer two more of those positions, the work that she's doing to help with especially dueling that's coming into our school system, the drugs, et cetera. What we do on prevention helps a lot in turn, before we have to worry about fights after the fact. And so I want to add two more, two more of those positions.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Wilk.
I have to admit, the irony, we just voted to cut 25% of new positions, and now we, but, okay, so, just, okay. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just a little confused.
Fair, fair point.
So, Mr. Deutsch, I would, I would just ask, do you have anyone who's pointed out that what two more would do? Is there a study? Have you, is there a need that you, or does it just come out of the air that you think we need two more?
Yeah, so.
In versus one, versus two, versus zero?
Sure.
Versus any lack of what they're doing over there?
Sure. Some of y'all may know a lady named Chrissy Falls, does a lot of work with our, a lot of things that are impacting students, and she called and said, Mallory's doing a lot of awesome stuff, but Mallory's spread way too thin, she's not able to get to as many places. We've done meetings and presentations with her, and just being able to help her in what that office is doing, reach more students would be awesome. Last year, we met with social workers, and they were telling us about how thin they were spread. We had somebody there who is doing human trafficking work, and if some of these, you know, one and two positions and what they add to students, really can do a lot.
Okay, so I'll chime in here, and then I'll ask Dr. Walz a question on this, just in, in light of just, you know, not to make fun at the idea of reducing 25% in the Kelly Building, but we are adding 47, 40 or so-plus council psychologists across the county who are actually in the buildings doing the work that we need. Is that correct, Dr. Walz, and will some of those folks be working on these types of issues?
Yes, and, you know, if you go back.
They're in the field.
Yes, in the field. If you go back to the salary, or, I'm sorry, the staffing study, you can see that exact same thing in almost every office in the school division is understaffed in the board commission study. So, yes, could we use additional help, but in that and many other areas? What, a, a couple of other things to say is, yes, those people out in the buildings are, are doing that work as well. We also have contracted services with more than one agency for substance abuse. Our Youth For Tomorrow partnership is another component of that. So for example, if we need additional assistance because of the preponderance of substance abuse, again, our Youth For Tomorrow contract, and I, I'm just giving you like here are four examples, but I will certainly be, you know, if that, if that doesn't pass, you know, we can certainly look at that over the course of the next year.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Wilk.
Point of clarification, so my understanding this year with this budget, more so than in previous years, is this is pretty compact, like if, if we add, let's just say, I don't know, the average cost plus healthcare, let's just say each of those two positions are 60K or something like that, that might be off the mark, I'm not pretending to be an expert. If we're off that mark, do we have to get rid of something to get those positions, or is there wiggle room, I guess, in some sense, for adding those staffing positions? Because in years past, I know our classic year last year where it was kind of a, you know, a selection process of getting what we wanted, but if we add these two positions, do we have the room, I guess, in the budget for it, or will this require some cuts and alterations of the budget allocations?
Well, again, I'll just speak as the person who's proposing the budget, is that we've pretty much maxed out by all the things we added since the last meeting. And if you just take the average salary of a physical education teacher, we put six of those positions in, what is that?
It's roughly $600,000, a little less.
So, because you have to figure salary plus benefits, so in listening to several of your, and, you know, we tried to make sure we had every one of the eight board members on board with any changes, so we've, we've tightened it up just since our last meeting last week.
Thank you, Dr. Walz. So at this point, we'll take a vote on Mr. Trenum's recommendation, or not, God, I'm sorry, I keep looking at Gil, Mr. Deutsch's recommendation about adding two positions. All in favor of Mr. Deutsch's recommendation? Say aye, or hands up in favor. Okay, all, that's, that's three, 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 and then all opposed, all opposed. Okay, does it now? Okay, yeah. It's gonna be five, yeah, six to two, six to two, six, no. Yeah, Mr. Trenum was struggling with that vote, but that's okay. But really, I, I think that's a great point, and I think, you know, had, had we brought that up earlier in the budget work sessions and looked at that, that certainly could have been something, as Dr. Walz pointed out, we are sort of maxed out, but I think looking into next year, and this is, you know, again, all budgets and, and the way we operate are, are things in evolution, and I think we should continue to look at that, that's a great idea. Dr. Walz.
So I just.
Dr. Walz.
So I just wanted to remind the board also that beginning last year, we started a Budget Congress, so that group of central office and building-based principals representing all levels and all departments. all levels and all departments in the school division met for hours and hours and hours over several months to come up with the critical unmet needs. Now, I'm not 1,000% sure of my memory, I don't recall that making it into the critical unmet needs to add that position, and again, we can look at it again for next year.
It did not exist was last year and we added.
We added that position last year, right?
Yes.
So I think what Mr. Deutsch is saying is, you know, he'd like to see another one added, which again, we can certainly look at.
We're happy.
And Mr. Deutsch, you know, as you pointed out earlier in your initial comments about, you know, the budget process for next year starting soon, I think that's a great idea to look at as we prioritize and look at critical needs and unmet needs over the course of this six years. So thank you so much for bringing that up. Any other, sure, Mr. Deutsch.
Sure, I'm just going to point out that I think, it's my fourth budget year, every year we say that the money's maxed out, there's always more money somewhere.
Excellent, thank you for that. Anything else? Okay, so I'll take a final, Mr. Trenum. Okay, I saw you make that move with your pencil. Okay, at this point, we'll take a straw poll. Again, this is a non-binding vote by the school board members on your support for the fiscal year 2020 budget. All in favor of the budget, as the superintendent presented this evening, raise your hands for aye. Okay, so what do we got here? Somebody count it? And then everyone, all no opposed to the budget? Or, and then, okay, and then abstention? Is that an abstention, Mr. Deutsch, for the record?
Obstention, that's right.
Okay, one abstention for Deutsch, one no for Mr. Trenum, because he wants to go out consistent. And the rest are all in favor. At this point, we will see you all next week when we vote on the budget. Thank you all very much.